Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out in the chilly weather. Not so bad, but we can expect a lot worse over the weekend. Oh, good. I call this meeting of the Plymouth Town Council regular meeting, February 3rd, 80 Main Street, Plymouth Town Hall Community Room into order. Fire exit notifications. If you exit through the back of the building, go to your left, you'll go out two doors, and that will take you right directly out into the parking lot area. If you go right, you'll have to exit through the doors and go through the police department exit. We will now rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This evening, we have a guest invoker. Councilwoman Sue Boyard will present tonight's invocation.
O heavenly Father, we thank you for food and remember the hungry. We thank you for health and remember the sick. We thank you for friends and remember the friendless. We thank you for freedom and remember the enslaved. May these remembrances stir us to service and your gifts to us may be used for others. May God bless Plymouth, Connecticut, and may God bless the United States of America.
Thank you very much. And if any other council folks would like to do the invocation at future meetings, just let me know. Thank you, Councilwoman Boyard. Item five is accepted meeting minutes from January 6th. This will be the regular council meeting. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes from January 6th, 2026? Please go ahead. We get the motion, Ron? Ron had a motion, second by Ray, and we have an amendment also. That would be clever. So there's a motion on the floor with an amendment. There's no objection to that. I'll go ahead and take a vote for... Unless there's further discussion? All those in favor of accepting the minutes as amended, say aye. Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Item six. This is for... A motion would be in order to accept the meeting minutes from January 22nd. This was the special meeting. Is there a motion to accept the minutes for that meeting? Joe Green made the motion. Second, Mr. Engel. Thank you. Any discussion, corrections, amendments? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, folks. Item seven, public comments on agenda items. Would anyone like to address the council and the public on the agenda item? Anyone from the public? Anyone from the public? Agenda item. It doesn't sound it.
Testing.
There you go. Thank you.
It's from Penelope Church, 328 Main Street, Terryville. The reason I'm coming forward is today we have capitals coming. I did not go through them all, but I went through a majority at the end to hear what people were looking for. What I'm begging yous to do is look at these diligently, and you're going to have to prioritize. We don't have... Unfortunately, our revenues are not there, and we haven't been getting our revenues. Instead, we give them back to the departments, and it's getting to be more and more departments taking them. So we have no money, and that's a sad point. And I also want you still to consider, with each one of these offers, it's a one-time thing, not every year they're coming back for more and more and more. First thing that should be a priority in this town are the roads. We, the taxpayers, can't even drive down half these roads. So where's our priority? You know? And hopefully, we can turn around and turn that around, because the taxpayers pay the bills here. And most of the people that work here, some live here, but like the police department, there's only two. And yet, we're giving them all this money, and we don't have money to do our roads. We don't even have money to be fair with employees. And so this one's running and doing this job and that job. You all need to look at all of this and look at it honestly, because who you're working for is actually the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments on the agenda items? Any comments on agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move to the next item. Thank you. This is the mayor's report. I'll ask for forgiveness in advance. It's a little lengthy, but here we are. In your packet tonight, council members, there's a thank you letter to the town hall staff from Larry Chicarella, who's the director of the Food Pantry. The Food Pantry provides, in this letter, its goals, along with a brief summary of their activities, programs, and service statistics. I want to thank the Food Pantry and its staff and all their volunteers for Plymouth. I added that to the manager's report in your packet. You would have that particular item at the top. I want to address some weather-related topics. Certainly, we've all been reminded that we do live in New England, and the recent large storm has brought to light many issues. First, I want to thank the town crew and all the additional staff and our vendors who got us through the storm and are continuing the cleanup. There's a total of a crew of 11 at some point, 12 persons, operating the plows, the lifts, and all the support that's necessary. They worked 32 hours in a 48-hour timeframe from Sunday morning until Monday evening. An additional 10-hour shift was worked on the following Tuesday. We used 200 tons of salt. We don't have the exact amount of sand, because at times we use the sand-salt mixture. And we also made several tons available to the town residents, which those of you who have gone up to there know that under the tarp on the left-hand side of the garage, we have, excuse me, salt for residents. So I don't have an exact amount of the salt. I'm sorry, the sand. However, cleanup is still ongoing, as it is in many towns across the state. Fortunately, we avoided a storm this past weekend. It certainly would have caused a lot of trouble. As I mentioned, several issues surfaced because of a large amount of snow that I'd like to address this evening, primarily the snow removal from sidewalks and fire hydrants, which I made some comments about on our Facebook page. The town does have an existing ordinance that requires property owners to clear sidewalks on their property. That said, we must be reasonable, and we all have the responsibility to work together and ensure everyone's safety. Over the past several years, the town crew has had the capacity and equipment to assist with sidewalk clearing. Very small storms enabled us to do that. In this storm, that simply cannot be supported like the residents have been used to. Several residents called and voiced concern about this. When possible, the town crew provided support. In several cases, Public Works and the mayor's office and/or the mayor's office was contacted by concerned residents who simply could not physically remove the snow around the sidewalks or the hydrants for a variety of reasons. We are grateful for that level of communication, and it helped us to prioritize the snow removal, and we worked with the fire department to let them know that there were certain hydrants that we couldn't get to or that residents couldn't get to. Again, safety is our priority. Several concerns were also raised about whether or not some fire hydrants function at all. Although we do not have an ordinance regarding fire hydrants, I think it's reasonable to ask residents to assist with clearing or, like I said, to notify some locations of hydrants that cannot be cleared, so we can assist with that. I have contacted Connecticut Water Company regarding hydrant maintenance. If residents believe the hydrant is not functioning, please contact Public Works or the mayor's office, and we will have Connecticut Water verify that that hydrant is on the grid and will have it removed if it's inoperable. All hydrants are flushed and serviced yearly, and based on current information and my conversation with Connecticut Water, all hydrants should be functional. That said, we will make sure that they are, and like I said, if they're not, they'll get removed. Also, we are working on an adopt-a-hydrent program to assist the fire department. We'll have more information on that soon on our website. I want to provide an update on the proposed solar project at 270 Preston Road. The State of Connecticut Siding Council has granted Plymouth a public hearing regarding this proposal on March 31st. There are two parts to the hearing process. At 2:00 PM, there's an evidentiary session when the applicant will present information, and any persons that are authorized through the Siding Council as intervenors can also present evidence. It is our intention... We're working on that to petition the council so the town of Plymouth can be recognized as an intervenor, and we can present our evidence with regard to this project. The second part is at 6:30 PM, where public comment will be heard. These meetings will all be conducted via Zoom conference. There are very specific rules and procedures on how meetings are conducted. The town will be posting all the information regarding the hearing on the town's website. We will be posting all the information in print, and we'll have the various websites and everything that you can link to in order to connect with the meeting. We're also making space available. We plan to use the community room or the assembly room so residents could come if they wanted to, and we could petition, and they can speak to the Siding Council via Zoom here at the town hall. I do want to say, though, go back and repeat, there are very specific rules and procedures. If you want to participate in public comment, you must register prior to the meeting, and all those rules and regulations are in the documentation on the website, and again, it'll be posted on our town's website as well. The Siding Council's website is siding.council@ct.gov. That is siding.council@ct.gov. You want to look for petition number 1696, and all those details can be found there that I just described. Another update, the town's Communication Commission and Fire Department have been working with Norcom Industries to upgrade our communications towers. This effort has been ongoing for many months and is needed to eliminate the radio dead spots in various sections of the town, as well as modernize the equipment. And believe it or not, that's supposed to start tomorrow. We'll see how the weather goes, but according to the information we have, the towers should... Construction of the new equipment should begin tomorrow. I'll certainly keep everybody updated if there's any change in that schedule. Regarding public comments received at our January meeting, I want to say that the budget development process is underway, and all departments are evaluating their needs. This includes police department revenues, expenses, patrol and support autos operated by the police department, and their long-term capital needs. We are working with our assessor's office to evaluate the impact of the reevaluation and all tax abatement agreements. As we go forward, we'll work with the Economic Development Commission carefully to weigh the impact of tax abatement agreements on future revenues. Abatement agreements that are already in place cannot be modified. Charges and fees assistant delinquent taxpayers and because of late collections are being investigated to ensure that town practices are within reason and at best practice across the state. We recently launched the mayor's Facebook page, and we will continue to respond to suggestions made by the public to improve our communication. We appreciate your feedback. Regarding the mayor's Citizens Advisory Board, which I spoke about last meeting, we are looking to cap the board to nine members presently, and we have nine people that have contacted the mayor's office. We're going to confirm with those individuals that they are still committed to participate, and we plan to start those meetings in March. If there's vacancies, I'll continue to inform the public to fill in any vacancies that might be available. I hope to have those meetings go on a monthly basis. Based on how those meetings go and scheduling, I do plan on initiating a second advisory council or board that would consist of business owners to focus more on economic issues that are facing the town. A lot of folks have reached out to our office about that. I hope to also get that launched as soon as possible. Our website revision is ongoing. Still some technical things that we're working through. We did have a department head meeting where our tech advisory folks discussed the revisions of the website, and all of our department heads are reviewing their own departments, what they want in the website, and how they want the information presented, and that's going to be part of our website revitalization plan. I hope to have an update on the target completion at our March meeting. Probably, it's going to be at least another 60 days before we're ready to launch, and given our tech as much leeway as I can. But it's... I'm sure it'll work out fine. In the meantime, we will continue to post vital information on the town website and the mayor's Facebook page. As always, do not hesitate to call my office with questions or concerns. Many residents have reached out, and we'll continue to respond as rapidly as possible and hold appointments with individuals if they request one. That's my manager's report. Again, thank you. That was a long one. Okay. Again, thank you. We're going to move to item nine, the town council liaison reports. I started to my left last time. We'll start with Mr. Engel, if you don't mind. We'll start with you on the right-hand side. Any liaison reports, sir?
Okay, I'm going to start with the report of finance report about this liaison. On the meeting on the 25th, we covered some credits that... The first one was tabled, it was for a compensation, workers' compensation item that was tabled at that time. There were some questions about the budget allocation. The second one was a generator repair, which was... Which had passed. They've also handed out a new budget expenditure report, which I find quite interesting, and that's... If you get a chance to take a look at the next meeting when they're there, it's a nice little... Nice little review. So what else have I got here? Audit update, the... On the 20... As of the 24th, the update was... Fiscal year '24 audit was processed to OPM. I don't know if it was submitted yet. As of then, they had not submitted it before the order had... But it's my understanding it was pushed through.
Yes, that was confirmed. OPM has the initial statements for that.
And I believe they're starting on the 25th.
That's correct.
That's my finance report. In the wetlands, it needs several times a month. 118... 121, there's a public hearing scheduled for Stroback Road parcel that didn't want to walk on. And then on the other public hearing that's scheduled is for Green Line Home Builders for one unit, probably on South Street. I go through this much, much more in terms of detail, but it's too much detail. It'll be here for three hours. After that, I'll let it go.
Thank you, Mr. Engel. Ron?
I really don't have much here. You touched on the solar farm, which is very important. And the other thing that we heard was, and I don't know how true it is, Marcus could not give us any information, that the Walgreens Plaza might have a rent there.
I don't have any information on that.
And the new Richards Corp. on north of Harwhitan, they put an application in to put up a new building on their property there. And that's about all I have tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Thank you. Ms. Boyard?
I'm going to have to ad lib this. I did a nice report and left it at home. That's always good. I missed this month's police report. Dave and I were off on a vacation, which needed vacation, so I missed that, but I did talk to the chief. We kind of caught up a little bit. I also went to the fire commission. Those guys are amazing. They're putting their budget together. Can you hear me? They're putting their budget together, and it's just... They all... They have it down. So it's really good the way they work like that. Let's see. I wasn't able to go to Human Resources, because I had another meeting that conflicted, so I'll make sure I get to them this month. And... But I did talk to the person that's here in charge, so... And then the... Not the... I'm sorry. The Veterans Council that we're working on. We just have to do some protocols and run it through a few people, and that should be up and running. The whole thing is that it's part of it, probably the next month, I would think. So that's it.
Thank you. TJ?
We had a couple meetings this month. Water pollution control was canceled due to the snowstorm, so that will be meeting again next month. Public Works, we had a very in-depth meeting. We talked a lot of... Lot of stuff. We have the new Public Works Director, Joe Sinetski, there. So he's starting to learn a lot of the ropes of the job and what's going on there. There are some discussions that are going to be taking place over the next couple of months about the fleet and whether it's best to buy fleet instead of leasing it like the current leasing. So there should be some decisions being made there. The lease program's working better than buying, or if it's maybe better to buy the trucks outright. They're also talking about increasing the material that they sell out of the quarry up at the... Up by the fairgrounds from $2 a yard to $7 a yard, so we should have something on that to vote on for next month. The Parks and Rec Commission, we went on that. They have basketballs going on right now, and they're working on some summer activities. They're trying to figure out summer camp right now, but there's some stuff in limbo that they're trying to find out about. So they will be attending the next Board of Education meeting on February 11th, when they're going to present the Boys and Crows Club information to see if it's going to be feasible to run a town program for summer camp or not this year. So there'll be more on summer camp probably at the end of February, beginning of March. And that's it.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. We appreciate that. You are a window into the various boards and commissions, and that's much appreciated. I do want to add also that regarding cap... I'm sorry, not capital improvements. We've got capital improvements here tonight, so I got it on my mind. Economic Development Commission is scheduled to meet next week, so I met with Vance Taylor and have also spoken individually to most members of the Economic Development Commission, as well as I spoke to Attorney Hamsey, who also happens to be the chair of the Downtown Revitalization Commission. So we can expect a lot more information coming up with respect to downtown development, revitalization, economic development. One of the big things from economic development is we're kind of going to need to repurpose that organization a little bit, because the original charge was based upon the industrial park. And with the industrial park being filled, the goals of economic development are changed a little bit. So we're going to be having a formative meeting, electing a new chairman with that commission. And again, we expect to have more coming from economic development. If any of the council members are interested in being a liaison there, that's wonderful. If not, I'll just continue to be liaison to that committee for now, till we get it rolling and get it cooking again. We still have plenty of commercial space in the community, and so we need to work together to identify developers, make sure we're offering real estate at a competitive level, and not giving away too much money in the forms of tax abatement. So we have a lot of work to do as far as economic development is concerned. Thought I'd throw that update in, so you know what's going on with that commission. Thank you. Let's move to item 10. I would entertain a motion for the refund of overpayment property taxes to Wesley and Jacqueline Donio in the amount of $292.36. We have two for Richards Corporation, one in the amount of $638.81, and the second for Richards Corporation is $752.10. Is there a motion for the refunding of property taxes?
So...
TJ, thank you. Second, Joe. Any questions? Any comments? Hearing none. We'll do a voice vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Late list today. That's good. All right. I want to just give a quick introduction. Our Capital Improvements Committee is here tonight. They are going to present and inform us about the work that they've been doing over the past months. They're going to talk a little bit about their process, and they've got a formal presentation that will be available on the screen. I would invite any council members, if you'd like, to just go down and join the audience, or you could refer to your handout that was provided to you. But in order for our audience at home that might be watching on television, we're going to do a little bit of a technical move here. It's going to just take us a minute to get set up. Bear with us. We're not going to go off-air, but we're going to set up, and then I'll turn the floor over to you, Chairman Castle, as soon as we're ready, okay? So everybody relax for a minute while we set up. Again, let me introduce George Castle. He is the chairman of our Capital Improvements Committee. It's all yours, George. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, honorable mayor and town council. My name is George Castle, and I'm the chairman of the committee. The Capital Improvements Committee is here to present the results and prioritize recognitions for each of the town's department capital requests. We interviewed 11 departments, including the Board of Education. But I'd be remiss if I couldn't at least, right now, recognize my staff who helped me to pay this happen, the great team. Jim Koneski, Vincent Gutierrez, Mike...
And that's why it's a six this year and a six-year outlook. As funding becomes available. The goal here is to have similar shovel-ready projects on the shelf, prepared for a quick launch. So Jim talked about the synergy and what we're trying to get to is taking a look at this big sheet of project sets here and look for things that could be combined. Look for similar projects of similar scope and work and optimize economies of scale in plan and specification development, equipment mobilization, and material cost. Then interdepartmental meetings with architect, engineer, recommend for maximum communication and coordination and town customer input. That town customer is the head of that department. Perform routine inspections. When a future need is identified, the project should be studied as solution engineering with specifications or the work to be completed or a product to be requested for purchase. So some of the things we spotted were, and these are projects that we recommend to combine, the large ones, road and pavement. And if we look at that, there's three opportunities for that. So you could send those to us. So the Department of Administrative Services has these contracts. Apparently they've been used to get a civil or geotechnical engineer. Or if there's in-house capability for that, that's great too. But in year one, you do the engineering and design for the roads that are prioritized per previous studies. And this should include school driveways and parking lots. Those are big-ticket items. If you have machinery out there already, doesn't it make sense to have the engineer look at that too? It's a similar type of thing and they could, in a close vicinity, maybe they could take care of that stuff too. That requires cooperation among departments. Another one that could be combined are, there's a variety of roof repairs and building upgrades. There's about six opportunities in the budget for similar work that could be combined. And prepare the engineering and design scopes of work for roofs, windows, interior upgrades requested by these various departments. Another opportunity would be for HVAC, heating, ventilation, and air conditioning. There's at least two opportunities for that. It depends what stage the project is in. Really what you're talking about is project management. And the other thing that Jim mentioned that we noticed, the pursuing of grants, endowments, and funding opportunities. And there's an alphabet soup of state of Connecticut fund sources. LoC, LotC, STEEP. Okay, I could go on for a while, but for example, water pollution control. If you do a quick internet search or AI search, you'll find at least three opportunities for. And I'm not saying, some of the departments are doing it, some are not even aware. But there's funding opportunities for volunteer fire departments. There's at least five opportunities out there. Ambulance has seven, and they, they're the ones that we're going after. School repair grants, DAS, OGA, OPS, DRIP, SIG. There's all these things out there. They already wrote these justifications for the budget. Why not send those out to these folks and shake the tree? Maybe an apple will fall. So along with these big ones that I mentioned, you have under supply and service projects. If they don't get funded, that's okay. We still encourage them to develop plans, specs, and scopes. And eventually that priority will get to that point. Sure, all documentation is prepared for when funding does become available.
Like Jimmy said, there's a lot of grants in mind from the state really for bits of worms. If you shovel away, you'll have to get money in grants. There's one other thing that we want to get into. We have a template that shows how we do our scoring. I wonder if we all have a copy of that up here? Want to go over? Let's see, we'll try. It's quick, but it just goes on how we score. And when we score, we don't, once we've gone in and interviewed and we got the target and everything one, we go home, individually score. We don't do it for each other. Pretty interesting. Oh, did you hear me? I gotta do it over again?
No, I won't.
Okay. Architectural, when we're scoring, after we've gone through and interviewed what they want, we take, go home, what's fresh in our minds. We don't score together. We score individually. When we come back in the next week, then we tally it together. And it's remarkable that we all come out pretty close to the same. So, oh, not that one. No, the one that shows. That one, perfect.
Mr. Castle, I just wanted to check to let folks know that the materials that you provided to us, we will make available so people can download them and look at them. You know, once we get to that point in the budget process, we'll make this available to folks. So don't be alarmed at home if you can't see this. It's, there's a lot of information here, but we will make sure it's available. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. The process goes pretty much unless, I think it's changed. As we go and present it to the mayor, and then he presented, goes to what he wants to do. He knows what funding he has. Goes to Board of Finance and they say, yes, we agree with it. Well, maybe they want to take it out or they're putting something in. And then he comes back to council and makes the final decision. Is that correct?
You got it, Mr. Castle.
All right.
Okay, so what we're looking at here is a ranking sheet that we've completed. The department should be the Board of Education. Let's see, is it all, it's all Board of Education. Each one of these columns, 1, 2, 3 through 11, represents a request that we were, that they submitted to us. The next line, total estimated cost, is on that line going across. And then follow down below, this is, this is an early sheet because it does not have all of our scores on there. All right, there should be four scores underneath each one of these. And at this point, it's probably working process because only Vince and myself had ranked those requests. So as you'll see, say in column one, for this particular request having to do with the Fisher School replacement or repair, I don't remember which it was. There's a score of 82, there's a score of 100. There would be, when we were done, there would have been four scores here and we would have averaged them. And then the subtotal, the ranking score is down here on the bottom line. We don't carry it out this far. We're not trying to display the written pie. So this score would have been 60.66 compared to 56.66, 51, and so on. So each one of these would have had a score that was determined by the four of us on the board on the commission. Couple of other things. Would you have any questions about that? This is part of the first, but it's not the final. All right, couple of other things I wanted to say, tying up on what Vinny just reported. We did have one exemplary request this year. Came from the, from the library. And it was a request for HVAC air handling system. And that request included information on a 0% interest loan from EverSource and a statement that they're working with an engineering firm to prepare detailed plans and specifications for a replacement system. So that's exactly the kind of information that we're looking for. You know, the kind of information that Vinny just spoke of with looking ahead, looking for other ways of funding these requests besides a taxpayer and of doing engineering study. So you know what you're shopping for, getting to three bids, and doing it in a well-informed manner. So we come up with the best, dare I say, deal, the best deal that we can have. There was one other thing that I wanted to refer you to. This is personal, as a member of this capital improvement, but it's my personal observation. I feel that there is a need for an overall facilities manager. And there was an ordinance developed in 1989 that reads, "The Director of Public Works shall cause to be promulgated specifications and engineering standards for the construction of highways, sidewalks, drains, and above public improvements within the town." So I know the Board of Education is responsible for the maintenance and for their buildings that they oversee. Personally, I still think it would be beneficial for every department in town to utilize the Public Works Director in preparing specifications and getting engineering studies done. That's all I have. If there are any questions.
I think some of the people will be interested more in what the board has picked. For the ambulance, their two top scores was new ambulance to replace 1-1-2, and then the power loader structure. Board of Education, number one priority was the Harrius Fisher window replacement and the Harrius Fisher roof. For economic development was the downtown revitalization, but that is year two of three. Plan of development was the next one. The fire department was replacement of engine four and headquarters upgrades for Station One. IT technology was the annual computer replacement and the town modernization backup year two of two. Library has two. It's the HVAC replacement system, two out of the third year. Library, computer, and technology upgrades. Parks and Rec, number one was the core drill study for Lake Winfield and the dog park on Main Street. The police department, surprisingly, the police vehicle replacement program and the body cameras. WPCA, the first one was the generator replacement. And the second one was the service building repair. Public Works was the town nature roads and the roadway deicing storage addition. For the Assessor, it's the revaluation. It's year one of three, and it's $50,000 each. These are only the very top ones. There are more listed, but this, this is to let you know as town council that there is more that has to be done in a lot of these buildings. If you take a look at your sheet, there is definitely a lot that has to get done, especially to the schools, WPCA, and Public Works.
Now, this is just on the scoring sheet, the composite of all of it, how we rated it. It's available online to everyone to look at. So it shows on there our scoring or it shows on our ranking? You all have.
We have it, yep.
Any questions?
Any questions for our Capital Improvements Committee? Mr. Angle, go ahead.
I noticed going through some of this, they didn't request a roof on the high school. That's approaching 20 years old, which qualifies for about 60%. And I didn't see. Most of, all, three of the schools are on here for roof, but I don't see the ice.
Yeah, that's.
I'm surprised. On top of that, I'm surprised they put windows in for Fisher because about 15, 18 years ago, when I was Board Chair, we put all the windows in. So I'm trying to, I, I don't know, just, I'm just asking.
Because those windows are not blocking properly.
Can't we replace the lines? I, I.
Well, maybe you're thinking that that's going to come up next year.
Showing your hand, Mr. Angle.
Any other.
Well, I'm a school businessman, but nobody doesn't know. I'm a school businessman, so I know where these grants come from. I know the percentages that you get for reimbursement. I know who should be applying for some of these grants. But they can't get the grants until they get a commitment from us, the town. That's part of the problem. You're kind of in a catch-22.
Incidentally, the mayor might want, might change it, but right now, the requirement is anything over 5,000 is capital.
Any other questions from the council? We can leave this screen here all night. This is good for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, we're all set. Hearing no more questions. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Green has a question. Go ahead, you can still move that by, thank you.
Why do some of the line items do not have amounts to them?
Because it's not, by the mayor, those are from last year. They don't follow too. These are new ones that the mayor will be filling in. We're only going by this year.
But under the line item of amount requested, for instance, Fire Department Headquarters, Station One, there's no amount. So did the, did the particular department not submit an amount or?
I know you made the comment, Jenna, this might not, this sheet we have may not be the completed sheet. I don't know, I'm just speculating.
That one you have.
Yeah, and the amount requested column, the sheet we're looking at, there are some amounts to some amount.
Okay. They gave us an estimated cost of $1,600,000, but it wasn't for that one building. It was a request they submitted was for Station One and Building Three of this. And that $1,600,000 figure was for all of the items they were requesting. We didn't have a break down.
They gave us a package. So that would be the description of the total of that.
Yeah, so they're down here. Okay, Jay Reed, what we have not seen, why we don't have a break down of those numbers. Description of expense. Repair, old, outdated, crumbling exterior or stage one including windows, butters, roof, driveway. Free Station One up to code regarding handicap accessibility. Update kitchen, bathrooms, radio room, and even a rear garage door or another drive-through bay on the rear of pump room, fix apartment. Station Three, need cable and replace that due to rotten road damage. Exterior facade upgrade. Upgrade bathrooms, kitchen, radio, road, and AC unit. Repair parking lot. All for $1,600,000. So we did not have that broken down.
They were the, one of the first to come before us. And it's the time they just gave it to. But we rated them all individually.
So they did rate our all compares by its priority. They just didn't make it say.
Yeah, I would make the comment that, I've seen this spreadsheet. It's pretty extensive. And when we work with the finance department, put together the final budget, we'll have. Excuse me. We will definitely have all these amounts in there available. I mean, this, I think this is also part of note that this is, the purpose of this presentation tonight was to explain the efforts that your committee has gone through. There's still three phases left of this whole exercise. The budget will come to my office, I'll work with finance, and then we'll have, you know, we'll have the completed sheets with the amounts, with the recommendations of what's going to come forward. That'll go, that'll be a part of my presentation to the Board of Finance. And then they'll also meet, I believe, they'll schedule to meet with Capital Improvements to go over the details too, because the Board of Finance has the task of, to your point earlier, Mr. Castle, they could reprioritize these based on, you know, you're presenting your information based on scoring. There might be other priorities that surface during the budget process where they would change some of these and the final budget would, you know, is still a ways away coming before the tri-board meeting. But we can take a look at that, Mr. Green. I know there's several values here, and I'm not sure whether it's just because of the way this printed out versus because it's pretty extensive. I've seen the spreadsheet, and you need two screens to look at it.
Yeah, that's right.
I'm not sure if that helps, but it's a great question. I mean, some of them have value, some of them do not.
Thank you very much. Do you have any more questions?
Anyone else, Joe, anything else? You're good, thanks. My left side, TJ Sue, you're all set, good to go? Yes?
Just a quick look, so you're looking at about 3.6 mil in capital? Is that what we're looking at? Somewhere that range? No, just curious because we are missing numbers.
We're not sure what the mayor was going to say.
I have not looked at this in that level of detail, Ray. I can't, I can't answer it.
It's not.
Have anything?
No, no problem.
No, I have to sit over there.
Right, okay.
Thank you. Nice job.
Yes, thank you, Capital Improvements Committee. I think your points are well taken. And if the general public can take anything out of this, we continue as a community to do the best we can to prioritize keeping the lights on, moving the town forward, keeping our buildings and our roads as operable as we can within our means. So that's the goal. Again, thank you all for your efforts and thanks for coming before us tonight. This is not, again, the last, not the last time we'll hear about capital improvements. The budget process will begin, my recommended, my recommended budget is due to the Board of Finance next week. And the Board of Finance will start their processes beginning with their February meeting. And they've got an aggressive schedule with their meeting, I believe, twice a week. Once we get into the last week of February, so February, March. And to meet all the deadlines it's required by charter for us to move forward the budget. So a lot more to come. There'll be more discussions in this meeting and other future meetings. So again, thank you, Committee, for all your work. I see you quite regularly in the mayor's conference room beating up these spreadsheets. Thank you. Okay, that concludes item number 11. We'll move to item number 12, which is public comment on non-agenda items. If anyone has a, wants to address the council on any topic, this is your opportunity to do so.
Mounton Church, 328 Main Street. Listening to all this, I'm going to make a big suggestion. Get a time study done. Not go into employees and say, tell us what you want. Get a time study done. Any business that was using this amount of money would have a time study. And this town does not. And it's not a wish list. And again, you have to consider the people. Also, I would like to see, put together the, to look at having a town manager. It was promised and not to sit around and wait for two years. So we're waiting for four years and running like this. This is not organized at all. And I feel for yous because I don't even think you're impressed. Because you don't know which way to turn. And I think the most direct and honest way of doing this, let's go ahead and get this together. Because it's going to take 18 months for them to complete their task, which gives us time to have an election on this. And the mayor said he was for it. He wanted to let the people decide. So I think it's time we look at a lot of things. Because this, this to me is, everybody thinks they got power. Read the charter. Read what it says about Board of Finance. Board of Finance recommends. They don't have any power. They can only recommend. And it's 3%. Maybe people don't want that either put in there. Maybe they want to go back and vote on everything, you know? And we should have a right. And each of yous should think about it and bring it forward. But I think a time study should be done. And that's one thing that I see. Not asking people, oh, what do you want? I could want the world. That isn't making this town efficient, but a time study would. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional, hang on please, Mr. Castle. Any additional comments on any topic from the general public? I'm not seeing any, Mr. Castle.
Just one other thing. I want everybody to know that the Capital Committee does not have money. We come through basically by what the people are requesting. And we both prioritize a lot of it. It comes from safety issues, but we both, and we're there. We see how much money is involved, but we don't base our decision on that because that's up to the mayor and Board of Finance. So it's not, I just could say, oh, the money's going here, it's going, we have nothing to do about.
Thank you for your comments. I'm going to have one last call, any additional public comments? I am not seeing any additional public comments. I'm going to move to item 12, which is any comments from our town council members. I'll start with my left-hand side. TJ, any additional comments?
I got nothing.
Mr. Boyer, any additional comments?
I just want to thank the Capital Improvements Committee for their work on this. I, I was on that committee for 12 years, 14 years at one time. And I understand that the work that it entails to go through and interview each department head to get a, obviously a list produced, prioritized and all that. And I think it's important that we have a capital plan for the future so we know what we have to spend on items. And obviously, they're going to go up, but at least we know what we, we are going to have to deal with. We can't go into it blind. So I thank you for providing the reports to us. Thank you. Thank you.
No comment? Thank you, Maron. Anything, Ray?
Again, thank you. I, again, being in the public sector myself, as an employee, I know what goes into these, into, into these budgets. I'm working on another one for another district. There's many, many hours that goes in, and you did a very good job, by the way. So I, if I sounded like a grumpy old man, I apologize. That's not, that's not my, not my forte. I'm just, I'm a numbers, I'm a numbers guy, and I started seeing stuff, and I thought, jeez, 20 years ago, we did this, this, and this, and I don't see it in there now. That's the only reason why I have. So again, if I sounded that way, it's not in any way, any shape wrong to stone the job you did. Excellent work. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. I just want to say again, appreciate everybody coming out. It's always good to have a lot of folks here. It's very important. Public engagement is absolutely necessary for our success. I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting. Motion, Mr. Green. Second, Mr. Tishen. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye. Any imposition? None? Have a good night, everybody. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Thank you at home for watching. Have a good night.